Everybody for your patience. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Welcome to the October twenty seconds, two thousand twenty-four Board of Education Voting Meeting. We will call the meeting to order, entertain any modifications to the agenda. Hearing none, we will continue. No one has signed up for public comments, so again, we'll assume there are no board responses. Which brings us quickly to our student reps. And I was not here last meeting, so I don't know which school went first, so I'll allow you all to work it out.
You guys have to go.
Ah, sure. Hi, um. So first of all, busing issue has been so much better. The day after their presentation at the board meeting, two weeks ago, I noticed immediate changes. Huge appreciation and thanks to everyone who's been working so hard on this issue. Um, now the last bus is only arriving five to ten minutes after school starts and with fewer kids on it. So tomorrow, we are hosting the author Robin Wall Kimmerer, the author of Braiding Sweetgrass, Gathering Moss, and several other works on indigenous philosophy and the scientific worldview. Um, she'll be in our library during lunch. Thirty students are signed up to attend that, and a group of us are going to her lecture and book signing at IC in the evening.
Yeah, um, so a few things just to get through tonight. Stella can't be here, she's sick. So this Thursday, Psychis Council is making its comeback once more. It'll be on the twenty-fourth from four to five thirty. We encourage anyone who can come to please come. They're pretty interesting meetings. On the tenth, ACS had a very successful open house. Families were able to get an idea of what LACS looks like in terms of a school democracy, standardized testing alternatives, you know, being PBATS, performance-based assessment tasks, and other unique aspects. And as a bonus, those who are able to attend were able to see the Northern Lights. Following the horrific circumstances that emerged after that, emerged after Hurricanes Helene and Milton, Connor, who is an LACS senior, along with Alan Miller, one of our guidance counselors, and Lisa Gervais, our school secretary, will be starting a project that will eventually be a trip that will explore and employ various ways to provide relief and assistance to those who have been affected by these weather events. Uh, for many years, we had a trip called Katrina Relief, uh, that is not happening this year, and this will basically take its place. Um, and as always, seniors at LACS are starting to navigate through the college application process. Uh, many students, including myself, have asked for receipts and letters of rec and are writing their college essays in preparation for life after high school. As a senior, I can say this process is a bit tedious, but also exciting, and this will continue to unfold in the coming weeks and months.
Great, thank you, LACS, Ethica High School.
I think it's on.
It is on?
Okay.
Alright, yeah, thank you.
Um, hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Um, so I have a lot of fall season sport updates. Uh, the boys varsity soccer, uh, they've won ten of their games, have tied one and have lost two. They had their stack championship game yesterday with Oz Owego. And they're the number one, Ithaca, Ithaca is number one seed. Um, the boys JV soccer have have an undefeated streak. They've won twelve of their games. The girls varsity soccer have won eight of their games, have tied one and have lost three, and they're also the number one seed. The girls varsity tennis team, um, have won twelve of their games and lost one, and their team stack and sectional finals versus Vestal were also yesterday. Um, singles and double sectional play took place on October seventeenth and eight, uh, and several girls from the eighteenth, and several girls from the, uh, team represented Ithaca. Um, and they all moved on to day two of play, which is great. Uh, finally, or no, finally, uh, girls varsity volleyball have a record of winning ten games and losing one. They tied with Corning, um, and the Corning and Ithaca both have a final game today. Finally, boys varsity golf finished the season with a record of five to six.
I'm gonna follow up with like the instances where students have been shoving vapes and lunch trays on the toilets. So on Monday, we found that, we found out in our meeting with Ms. Hardisty that there's still a possibility of putting sensors, that there's a possibility of putting sensors in the bathrooms, which would indicate how many students are in the bathrooms. And we're gonna try to combat this issue, and this was already implemented at the Wood Middle School. I'm not sure if for the same reason or not, but it's a possibility. And we also found out with Ms. Hardisty that we cannot cut the doors as that would damage them. And lastly, the German exchange students have arrived, and they're leaving very soon next Monday.
The juniors took the PSAT this morning, so high, high scores will, um, they'll advance and maybe qualify for college scholarships. Um, and then I mentioned this last week, but our IHS collage concert is next Wednesday, October thirtieth, at seven thirty in Culp Auditorium. So it's where three hundred fifty of our IHS students involved in band orchestra and choir will all be performing. And we started combined rehearsals today, um, across ensembles and are excited to showcase what we have been doing so far this school year. There is a slowly blooming issue regarding the reusable, or yeah, reusable plates in the cafeteria. So the dirty plates are being left in A Building, which is where Culp Auditorium is, and in the Arts Quad, which is right behind the Welcome Center. Um, and a possible reason for this issue is that, um, these places are further away from the nearest dirty plate station. And so overall, there's been an increase of students not picking up for themselves. Um, and the cafeteria staff, we, we see them having to pick up for them, and we're trying to figure out ways to make this better. Um, and the board reps will be going on a field trip soon, um, to like a leadership training with the Cornell Teams and Leadership Center at the Hoffman Challenge Course. And we were actually invited by the Student Council of IHS, so we're excited to have cross collaboration between student leadership groups at IHS. And we are currently working on writing a newsletter to the student body. We sent you the one from September. Um, and the New York State Seal of Bilingual literacy Committee held a family info night on October seventeenth. And Ms. Bergman went to senior English classes to talk about the great program. Applications are due November first.
Hi, everybody. Well, we are currently in the process of scheduling a meeting with Dr. Bryman about recycling options moving forward and current discipline theory at IHS. Hopefully, that will be happening this week or next week. We still have to get in touch about the exact date. We discussed restorative justice methods with Ms. Hardisty and Dr. Bryman on Monday and hope to have more productive conversations about that future. The Climate Justice Alliance, the IHS Climate Justice Alliance, of which I am a member, will be presenting at Hobart and William Smith College on the process of passing environmental legislation, legislation through school boards, focusing on last year's passage of a climate resolution and efforts this year to expand to a more substantive plan. Keep you posted on that, uh, after that happens, that'll be October thirtieth. As Claire mentioned, we sent out our newsletter, and we're still trying to collect respondents on our graduation survey, wherein students indicated if they would prefer a combined graduation or two separate dates. And there's a number of reasons to prefer one over the other, but we wanted to see what the student consensus was. And we don't yet have a large enough number that I would be confident saying a, uh, school opinion on it, so I will refrain from that. Uh, last week, the early deadline for college applications has passed for a select few schools, for example, UNC Chapel Hill. But most have an early deadline of November first, so students are rushing to submit or have already submitted their essays, grades, test scores, et cetera.
Thank you, student reps. Board responses.
Two quick ones, Claire. Thank you for the, um, update with the newsletter that came out. That was very helpful to those of you who worked on that. It was nice to see. And, uh, kudos to, um, Bob and, uh, and I guess Mr. Bryman as well, about the busing situation at LACS. I, I hope that you guys are happy with it, and your team is happy with it. Always nice to hear a success like that. Thank you.
Other board members, please.
Just to echo Emily, not just that I'm really glad that you're getting to school earlier, but I also appreciate you bringing back the positive feedback. Um, it's, it's good to hear the, the good things that are happening in schools as well, and I also really appreciated that the comments from him last week, um, sharing all of that information, so I'm glad that it worked out. Um, I, uh, I'm curious about the German exchange students. I have no idea what that is, to be perfectly honest, and so it sounds like they're, they recently came but are also leaving soon, so I'm curious, I'm curious, what, is that a program that?
Yeah, I'm actually in that program.
Okay.
And they arrive like, we think of how to say, and they're living with like their close families.
Okay.
They're going pretty well, with on the table and all the other things.
Okay, and they, do they attend school with you all for, okay, very cool. Is there any, like, reporting back to the rest of the student body about the experiences or?
Just like directly during the program.
Okay.
They are required to participate some by, but not, right?
Why not? I, a lot of students here don't like to.
They, they are supposed to.
Cause there's a, it's strictly German exchange partnership program.
Okay.
And actually, there will be a presentation, I believe, on the, one of like, either, does that look? November the eleventh, the, um, the American advisor of the program will be trying to present the program to all of these being eligible for the second half of the exchange trip, this, which is scheduled potentially for this.
Thank you.
All of them are ready.
Great, great, thank you so much. Um, and my last question was, I'm glad to hear that the newsletter went out. I, I know that there was a, a, a question last time that maybe the newspaper isn't reaching the whole student body, um, and so I'm just curious, how's that going and whether there's any kind of strategies that you all have created to try to reach a broader contingent of students?
So we're continuing. So we're continuing.
With, um, the newspaper announcements as well, just because more can't hurt, but yes, the goal of the school-wide newsletters was to increase engagement. If we look at survey participation, I would say it's increased engagement modestly, but not to the level to which we would want. So we haven't enacted any of this so far yet, but I think next steps are putting forth, or trying to think about how to include these Google forms in newsletters in a way that's doesn't require people to read the whole thing, because you know, it's about a page-long document. We tried to keep it short, but most students aren't going to open up an email and read through the entire thing unless they're very actively engaged in their school government, which I would estimate most aren't. And because of that, you know, we need to find ways to give these feedback opportunities to people who want low-effort situations, low-effort uh, opportunities to contribute their ideas. I wish that wasn't the case. I wish that we had high-effort engagement all the time, but I'm sure, as you guys know, talking to the Ithaca community, it's very often people have their own things going on in their lives, so we're trying to think about how to package that information in a more concise and clearly accessible way.
Additional board responses?
Oh, wait.
Um, you're good. Um, we've also been collaborating with the club. It's called IHS Communications, but the advisor is our Director of Student Activities. So like Georgina Kinnman and I are in it, but, um, they're currently teaching, trying to teach students how to write emails and formal emails, things like that. Um, so it's, we're trying to combine like email literacy and things beyond that to reach a higher, or a larger audience as well.
Claire, we would welcome that workshop on email literacy whenever you're ready to do it. That is fantastic. Thank you very much. Uh, I will simply, um, add that next time the German exchange students are here, we would love to host them at Ethica College as well. I'll be in contact with folks. We'll make that happen. Uh, and speaking of Ethica College, Emily, thank you for mentioning the work, um, and the session tomorrow at LACS with Robin Wall Kimmerer. For my colleagues who may not know, um, who Dr. Kimmerer is, MacArthur Genius Fellow, uh, a book that has more than twenty to thirty thousand reviews on, uh, Amazon, not saying that that is a signal of quality, but is a signal of reach. Um, and, uh, it's quite possibly one of the most beautifully written books that I've had the chance to read along with, um, a different approach of thinking about epistemology and how indigenous knowledge systems can be helpful uh, in the work that we're doing. So we are beyond excited at Ethica College to be hosting. The event is free. There will be food. I had, I hope to pick the menu, so come join us. Uh, it's five thirty at Emerson Suites, uh, and then, uh, some other work, not only with students, but some other work with teachers in the district as well, so it'll be a busy day, and we're, we're blessed that we have someone like this come share their talents and their gifts with us, so very excited. And I'm particularly impressed, the reason why I'm spending some time mentioning it, I'm particularly impressed with Dr. Kimmerer because it was an explicit, uh, demand of theirs to work with students and to work with teachers. Uh, we don't always have folks who come to give a presentation at the college and demand that they want to work with our teachers, so I know, uh, Mary's been working with that as well. Thank you, and so if you get a chance, definitely come, come check that out. Uh, we'll keep our agenda moving. This will bring us to the consent agenda. And we will entertain motions.
I mean, oh, go ahead. Just gonna try it for the first time. Um, motion to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent, consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by Emily.
Second by Adam.
Uh, questions, debate, conversation, discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? And I abstain, because I was not here. Fantastic, the motion passes. Uh, that will bring us to the next agenda item, um, and Dr. Brown, returning from New York City. How are you?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. And, uh, much of my report has been already shared, as I was gonna highlight, uh, Dr. Kimmer being here. So a special thank you to the folks at Ethica College, including you, who made this possible for our young people and our educators. Then we have a contingency going up tomorrow evening, and we will be spending time with her during the day. Um, and I will, yes, I'm, I'm returning from New York City where the, uh, annual school board event is taking place over the weekend. And, uh, um, I can vouch for how difficult it was to get here on time, so I'm also recognizing that Ms. Yearwood and Ms. Corio, who spent a significant amount of time in sessions the last two days, are probably on the road traveling, so if you're listening via Zoom on your cell phones, thank you. Um, it was a joy to be with them, and as we learned, there's a lot going on outstate. Many sessions about finances, uh, many sessions about facility usage, many sessions about, uh, electronic, electronic, electric busing. Um, and there was some teaching and learning things there too. So, uh, anyway, it was fun to be there. Um, and I thank the board members for your participation and your support of that professional learning opportunity, which I enjoy very much, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Brown, and we'll make sure that there will be an agenda item where, uh, the board members who attended will be able to share. And Jill and I, who attended virtually for the sessions that we are allowed to log on to, uh, will share, uh, our experience as well for the virtual, um, aspect of it, so uh, always, always a learning experience. Um, this brings us to the school district business. Um, this agenda item, eight point one budget and finance committee update, was created when we anticipated having a budget and finance committee meeting last week that has been rescheduled for next Tuesday, so all of our committee meetings that were scheduled for last week that, um, we had to reschedule, all of them will be scheduled for October twenty-ninth, and so I don't know if this is an agenda item that we would prefer to have today, or we want to hold until we have the committee meeting to then proceed, um, with additional information and invite everyone to join us for that committee meeting, but I'm gonna look to the, to the chair.
I think we just hold.
That makes.
Maybe it was, there's, there was no meeting.
There was no meeting for us to give the update.
Yeah, it does.
So again, uh, next Tuesday, the committee meeting is at six P M for finance. Facilities is at four forty-five, that's correct. Um, and then we'll be going into a board development session afterwards, but, uh, we encourage our community to participate and to watch that finance committee meeting, and then we'll make sure at the next board meeting that we have an update on the agenda as well for that. That was fantastic. Uh, next agenda item is a possible revision to the academic calendar, and so let's gather some more information about what's being asked and proceed from here.
This club was gonna join.
Thank you for having me. I'm Mary Grover, your Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and we have, we are proposing two changes to our academic calendar. The first one will be the caregiver conferences and the professional, professional development day in March. We're proposing to do it the following week to be in line with the rest of the region. Unfortunately, our current academic calendar has it a week before the rest of the region. The problem that we are solving with moving it is first that our students who attend both these programming will not miss a day, and they will be able to attend it. The second is that our educators will be able to participate in regional professional development. Our calendar was finalized prior to the region's calendar. And next year, it's a, it's a thing for us to do differently and do in sync, uh, with our region. So that necessitates that change. The second one is an additional day for IHS students. It's a regions day. There are two new regions, uh, that, well, not new, new versions of regions that are gonna happen for high school students. Uh, biology and earth science. So given that the state mandates an earlier implementation of the regions so that they have time to scale the scores. There's a large number of students taking those two exams. And with the constraints of construction in our buildings and the timing that the state dictates, we're recommending that that not be, um, a day for all students at IHS, but just those taking those regents. This is added to the region's calendar. But folks at home, you'll see it's out of sync, it's not consecutive, and that's because we don't choose the date. The state chooses a date on that one.
Those are the two recommended changes.
Yes.
Questions, board members?
Yep. I do, I do have a question, sorry.
No, don't apologize. I hope I may be able to answer it.
I apologize, it's, I think it's a bigger question.
Okay.
It's not where, it's not the time to talk about it, but, you know, we get other requests about changing things in calendar, adding, you know, days of recognition for different days or, or whatever it may be. Um, is it, is it a simple-ish, smoothish, it's smoothish answer to like, to share what's, wh- what is, what is easy about like changing the cap, like what would make these moves like an easier shift than maybe like a bigger, like a, a bigger shift or a recognition of a new day? Is that a question?
Well, that's a great, the instructional minutes is the distinguishing factor. So administering a state test still counts towards instructional minutes. So having this additional date doesn't, at the high school where we don't have wiggle room to, to have additional days, say for, um, if we get a request for a high holy day. That is what the distinguishing factor is.
That's exactly what I was thinking. Thank you.
And if I understand correctly, the request for the date in March is just to move it a week later, so it's not like we're adding additional days or taking additional days, it's just moving when that takes place to be in line with the T S T Bosse's calendar.
Correct.
And then, then we're talking about the, the regions test as well.
And there probably should be an additional conversation because it is bigger. This notion of an instructional minutes and a mandate is something that I hope we can, um, advocate, um, to shift. Um, having heard from, um, artificial intelligence as a keynote speaker at our conference this weekend, it has me thinking a lot about these outdated, uh, regulations, including the amount of time one must sit in a seat. So that is a bigger question that I would hope that this board and we can talk about more.
I'm gonna push you, Dr. Brown. One, folks should be looking forward to, yes, the keynote speaker for the New York State School Board Association was a, a robot, an artificial intelligence robot, which, um, created, um, some raised eyebrows and for me, some significant pedagogical questions. I'll leave that for now. With that being said, tell me, tell me, um, or tell us, please, what do you, if you could, quickly, right, not, not publicly for now, but why did it have you thinking about an outdated model of seat time?
We are transitioning back from a pandemic in which all state regulations went out the window, including the amount of mandated instructional seat time. Not to say it was good or bad, but I think we learned some things, including how to utilize technologies to enhance, in some cases, what we do as far as teaching and learning, in some cases, what we, you know, we don't want to replicate. So I'm just open for the question, particularly as the artificial intelligences are significantly, um, improving each and every day. Um, but I love that we have regulations that we can change, everything from how we feed young people to which devices we can send home or not, to the instructional minutes, all of a sudden, one day was here and one day was gone. And we went back to putting them all back in without any conversation. That's my question and challenge.
Helpful, thank you. So then we'll talk as a board and maybe put something on an agenda for a discussion item, because it does seem like it's, we're not gonna be able to get away from it, right? It's coming. Fantastic. Mary, is this something that we want to have the board consider for this meeting and vote next meeting? Are we looking for a vote this evening to have it be confirmed? And, and maybe that's not asking you, maybe it's asking Dr. Brown?
I would love for us to follow our typical process. If the board is okay, we can put this online for feedback. And over the next two weeks, we gather feedback and then come back to the table for another discussion and possible vote.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Fantastic. Alright, so put it up, we'll get feedback and we'll go from there. Thank you very much for explaining the changes, look. Great. Uh, that brings us to our next agenda item, eight point three, a resolution to designate and or dispose of surplus property. And this time, we're referring to old wrestling mats. Are we, yeah, I'm, yeah, because now I'm curious about what, I don't know, are we selling these? Are we disposing of them? Are there stipulations that dictate what should happen with old wrestling mats?
Uh, thanks. We have a great opportunity here. We have, uh, wrestling mats that have, that we've been storing for over twenty years, wrestling mats that I wrestled on myself at Ithaca High School. They are no longer of any use, uh, to us. They have out, they're outdated. Uh, thanks to Samantha Little in the Athletics Department, they worked to, uh, work with a, a wrestling that's setting up at the Island Fitness, and they're going to, uh, work with the FKA Youth Bureau, and they're gonna reuse these mats. So we are not disposing, we have to put them on the agenda item, uh, to, to, uh, vote to give them to this group, but they are, uh, of no value at this time. But they are tremendous value, of course, to this outside group.
Questions?
Will this be the sum total of our surplus wrestling mats stored out at Dambie?
Um, uh, I, this is the summer. These, these mats were actually not at Dambie. They were at LACS. They were at a different, they were a different location, and, um, yeah, this is the sum of the mats that we have in excess, yeah. There's, is a lot of storage underneath L- LACS as well. Yep.
We'll get to Dambie at some point. If there's no other questions, we'll entertain motions.
Uh, okay. I move to approve the resolution, resolution to designate and dispose of surplus property.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Emily. Additional debate, discussion, or conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes. Thank you for folks who are here. Thank you very much. Um, and this brings us to agenda item eight point four, which is a resolution to develop requests for proposals. Um, probably best to see if we can move it and then discuss it briefly before we vote on it. So we'll entertain motions first.
Motion to approve a solution to develop one or more requests for proposals or RFPs, seeking professional service entities to study and make, ensure it trend predictions and feasibility recommendations as they relate to the Ithaca City School District's demographics, operations, and financial efficiencies.
Second.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Adam. Um, for the community at large, this is, I think I've made mention before, this is my fifteenth or sixteenth year on the board. The last time that the Ithaca City School District engaged in what we would call a demography study or a population projection was in two thousand eleven. I think the report came out in two thousand. was in two thousand eleven. I think the report came out in two thousand twelve. The last time that the Ithaca City School District engaged in, for lack of a better word, evaluation of all of its property uh was the same time during the same study. And so given um a number of moving parts, given a number of realities, both um fiscal realities and population realities. Uh, the board had a conversation at one point in time, thinking that it would be wise for us to have as much information as possible as we move forward into this next budget season, which would include things like population projections for the next ten to fifteen years, would include things uh like understanding what the value of all district property may be or may not be for that matter. And so what is being done in this situation is simply uh an information gathering with folks who are professionals and do this work to provide us with a document that will be available for all. So it's not the idea is to create the R F B or the request for proposal and to gather the information. We have no plan to do anything specific with it other than at this point in time to use it to inform our discussions and deliberations over the next couple of months. Did I capture that fairly? Absolutely. Any additions?
Yes. The one thing I would change on
Yep.
is that this, this request for proposals is not looking at, um, as far as I understand, the the facilities status, for example, we have um with Tetra Tech in campus regular, at least annual inspections of our buildings and we understand the the condition they are in to a a pretty uh minute degree. So this is, this is something somewhat separate from that.
Absolutely. And anyone in the community can look at that building condition survey for all buildings as well. Which includes a significant list of deferred maintenance as we know. That's something completely separate. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I would suggest that we do include in the R F P that the uh professional service uh look at that study and use that to make recommendations. Um, and so we'll write that into it, because that's a very valuable study that I hope they will take some time to review.
And mandate it every five years if not taken, right?
Uh, yes.
I believe it's every five years.
It gets updated annually, I believe, but it's completely
Any additional questions, comments? Discussion, debate, board members? Hearing none, then we'll call the question. All in favor? That passes unanimously. More to to follow. Uh, for the most part, that completes our voting meeting for this evening. The board will enter into uh or anticipates enter into executive session. Uh, but no voting items will take place for the rest of the agenda. And we will spend a few minutes in exec and then come back and uh bring the meeting to a closer adjournment. And so um, yeah, I don't even, let's not jinx it. So let's see what happens. How about we entertain motions for executive session?
Okay, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation. Collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law and matters leading to the appointment employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Emily. Discussion, debate. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Again, we will have committee meetings next Tuesday, both facilities meeting at four forty-five. Finance committee at six P M. Please join us. We will head into executive session at this time. Thanks. Thank you, good folks. We are returning from executive session and we are adjourning this evening's meeting. Thank you very much.